He has seven.
Recording of members' presence and absence.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Over the meeting's live statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alpha Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you, Carrie. Consent agenda, all the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following as referenced. Three point one, addition of any items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
Minutes of the August first, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting and the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two special meeting. Approval of finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers, and approval of the child nutrition report. Any plan of all of that surplus?
Go back up to agenda item three point two, our minutes of the August first, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting in the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two special meeting. Those minutes. Cannot notice any discrepancies with those. Agenda item three point three, our finance report. If you'll open the top attachment, you'll see our investments there. You will look at the second attachment. That is the monthly guidance that I send to you all for our report. Okay, so you can see our gross production here to date. We are up ninety-two thousand in motor vehicle tax. We are down thirty-eight thousand. And then our other three chargeable forms of revenue, RIA tax, we're up, school land earnings, county four mil. Really won't see our county four mil tax collection until December, January. So as we look at a comparison of charts on the following pages, you can see that we have a discrepancy in our revenue from our expense compared year-to-date. We have increased our revenue from last year forty-one thousand approximately, so we've collected more than we did last year. But we have to mention our expenses have gone up one hundred eighty-nine thousand. So be mindful of those expenses. Some of those are some increases in salaries and then also in our insurance, property insurance, late insurance, and so forth. Agenda item three point four, our activity fund report. You'll open up that attachment and review those activity accounts. All of our activity accounts are outstanding. The athletic account has seen majority of increases. You can see its balance of forty-four thousand as a result of flight sales, media guide, livestreaming for our activities. Agenda item three point five, there are no items, no fundraisers. Agenda item three point six, there are no inter-account transfers. Agenda item three point seven, if you will open up that attachment, have a year-to-date meal served. Take that back to two thousand twenty-one, and you can see an increase in our lunch and breakfast, which will... I want to thank our families for their diligence on paying lunch balances. They've done a great job. Also want to encourage people, we really need free and reduced lunch applications completed. To date, we have two hundred and thirty-eight completed, and although that may cover multiple students in one home, we need to collect more. Our enrollment sits at a thousand fifty-one right now, and so we'd like to collect as many child nutrition free, reduced lunch applications as we can because that will impact our federal pay. Agenda item three point eight, we have two attachments there, surplus items from the middle school. And then we have some surplus items from Longfellow, with surplus items from the middle school, kitchen equipment from Longfellow, and from a reading series that's known longer than yours. Any questions on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend it's approved.
Any more?
I'd like your motion approved.
Second. Second. Be careful of pretty what he said.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Not very funny today.
Item four, vote to approve purchase order incumbences for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-three. Four point one, general fund as referenced. Four point two, billing fund as referenced. Four point three, child nutrition fund as referenced. And four point four, gift fund as referenced.
Okay, if you will open up, go to agenda item four point one and open up the top attachment. That will be our general fund expenditures. And so a couple of those that I will point out to you. Purchase order number two twenty-four in Davis, Oklahoma, one thousand one hundred and eighty. Remote entry access point up here by the high school, the assistant principal's office. Purchase order number two twenty-seven, Bank Central, three thousand nine hundred and forty-one. Those are our installation of bank detectors at the middle school and high school. Purchase orders number two thirty-nine, some repairs to various restroom locks, partitions here in high school, one thousand five hundred and thirty. Purchase order number two forty, Waller Glass Company. That is some repairs to our northeast doors to the auditorium, the glass. Purchase order number two forty-five, ABC Bussing Company, nine thousand. That's repairs to the bus number nine, activity bus. ABC Company is located in Dallas. Purchase order number two forty-seven, Joe Rollins Hardwood Floors. That, nine thousand nine hundred. That is the refinishing of both new gym, old gym, and middle school basketball floors. And then purchase order number two fifty-two, Black Box Learning, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. That's tech ed software that we are reimbursing for through our federal program. The second attachment to agenda item three point one, our incumbences of payroll for new employees and new hires. Agenda item four point two, our building fund. You'll open that attachment. We have four incumbences there. Point out to you number twenty-two, for one thousand dollars with Top Choice Mechanical. It's repairs to the boiler for our high school auditorium. Cool. Agenda item four point three, our child nutrition fund. Have a couple of purchase orders there. Heartland Auto Chlor System, two thousand five hundred. That's to service and repair dishwashers throughout the district. Purchase order number sixteen, Curtis Restaurant Supply, nine thousand seven hundred and six. That's some equipment that we're going to purchase. We asked Keystone last spring to give us some items or some areas of improvement with regard to equipment, and they gave us a list of those things, so we hope this will help facilitate, make things easier for our cooks. So that equipment will replace some of our older equipment throughout the district. The cost of that is nine thousand seven hundred and six. Agenda item four point four, our gift fund. Thankful for the shared trust and their generosity to help our students attend multiple different universities. And so you can see the purchase orders there listing those universities. We have fifteen students that attend Northwestern Oklahoma State University through the shared trust. We have one that attends Southwest College in Kansas, three UCO students, nine OSU students, three OU students, one Spartan Academy in Tulsa, Oklahoma City University, one attending the University of Wisconsin, one at Northern Oklahoma Eden, and one at Southwest Christian in Oklahoma City. So again, appreciate shared trust and their generosity with our young people as they advance their educational career. Any questions regarding agenda items four point one through four point four?
Aren't we blessed to be able to do all this and not even wait in line? Amazing that we got the shared trust and their generosity. Any more questions?
There are questions. I would recommend approval of agenda items four point one through four point four.
I think virtually approved four point one through four point four is presented. Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Superintendent's report. Five point one, residential retirements and reassignments. Five point two, communications. And five point three, strategic plan.
We have one resignation. See the attachment there. Jen Sims, it's as she and her family have moved. Agenda item five point two, with regard to my communication. Just want to take the board again that I've been working with our insurance adjuster on held image claim on our roofs. That's been an ongoing process. Hope to be able to wrap that up this week, and then we will move towards a contract for an architectural firm to drop those specifications and begin replacement of roofs. Need to thank Tim Thomas, custodian here at the high school, our district head custodian. He went up with our adjuster last week and went up with, through the inspections, and has done a really good job, job of communicating what needs to be done and where it needs to be done. Agenda item five point three, our strategic plan. Really want to thank all of our employees. It's been, it's been a real test to get back into the flow of checking off action steps, making progress towards what our community asked us after a two-year layoff, reinstituting this plan. So they've done an excellent job. And tonight, Mrs. Martini is going to present personnel and also twenty-two, twenty-three steps.
You want me to just say one bit? What?
You just, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Argo is right. You know, when we, we had great ideas when we started, you know, working on the plan and everything, and then, you know, who would have known that with the pandemic hitting, it would just change everything, you know? And, you know, while we want to keep as many things the same as, you know, because they were issues then, there, there have been some priorities that have moved around. And Mr. Argo gave us the, the great idea of let's just, you know, we have a list of all these things that we want to accomplish, but we want to, we want to narrow it down and find the ones that are the most important and truly work on those. And so if you'll click it, you know, we know the four, the four areas, the curriculum and instruction, culture and community, personnel, and resources. So, so we all sat down together and we came up with the areas that we want to focus on. So I'm going to go through each one of those, and then I'll, I'll discuss personnel a little bit because that's the area that I'm in. So each, each one of us have come up with, with the areas that we want to work on. And when they present to you guys, each one is designated to present at a different time. So they'll come in and tell you where they are in dealing with these steps, like, you know, the processes that they've done, the, the different things. But if you have any questions and I can answer it, I'll gladly do that. So we decided that provide professional development to the common knowledge and language of literacy across content areas, as well as focusing on active student engagement. So we wanted to make sure that our teachers have PD on those areas. Okay?
Okay.
That's okay.
How do I do it?
Try your back arrow. Your left arrow? Or? Yeah. We also want to make sure, you know, not only are our teachers, you know, getting the professional development on this, we want to make sure that the parents understand, you know, what engagement should look like in, you know, the areas of content area literacy. We also want to monitor and make sure that students are engaged. When we walk through classrooms, that's what, that's what we want to see. So, okay? And then we want to use our MAPS testing data to figure out where our, you know, our gaps are in our academic standards, what areas we need to work on. So looking at previous year, you know, last year's, I look at MAPS data all the time. You know, when we have students that come in and they're concerned about things, we'll look back and say, well, let's see if, you know, you want to see kids increase. So those are things that we want the teachers to visit with the kids about so they know where they are and be able to visit with the parents as well. And then we have culture and community. So the committee wanted to develop a discipline committee with representatives from each site, evaluate all the district discipline data, implement a district-wide behavior plan from research and best practices, and then establish one consistent district-wide system of documentation and establish common language. So when something occurs at Lincoln, when they come to the middle school, it's the same thing. And we've gone through, and we've done a lot of, a lot of these things. You know, we've implemented PBIS. We have, you know, we can track pretty much any discipline issues through WinGage. But I think that we want to go back and kind of fine tune some of those areas and make sure with new principles that we're all on the same page and we all know, you know, we're all working together to make sure it's being done with fidelity. Also, you know, we've talked about character education for the last couple of years, figuring out how we're going to implement that throughout the district, having a district-wide character head plan, figuring out how we can recognize, you know, students and parents. And, you know, like I was talking to Jenny today, and she was asking me, well, how do you guys, you know, come up with your students of the month at the middle school? You know, there's just a lot of things that we can do to work together to make sure it's, you know, seamless across the district.
Sorry.
Figuring out, you know, how we want to recognize the parents and the students, and then, you know, what that looks like according to the community. How do we, how do we get our kids out there? You know, how, how can we help the community to see what great kids we have and the, and all of their accomplishments? So those are things that we're, the culture and community are working on. Also, you know, when our students are, you know, do receive some recognition, how do we put it out there? You know, through social media and the newspaper? Just figuring out the best way to get that information out to the community. Also, you know, we've talked about after-school programs, you know, and what exactly that looks like. It's a little bit different in each building on, on the needs of that. And so this committee wants to, you know, go back and, and look at those interests and see if we can fine tune that a little bit. And then we get into, this is, personnel is, is my area. I invited Kelly Parker to be here. He couldn't be here tonight. So I said, that's okay. I got it. I'll wing it for you. So one of the areas that we wanted to, to focus on was a grow your own program. And I don't know if you guys remember this, but this is, you know, we want, we want to bring in teachers to our district or potential teachers from Northwestern and have them come in, do their observations at the school, do, you know, they have so many hours of observations they have to do, student teaching. We want to help these students, you know, grow and want to come into Alva and teach for us instead of going to school and, you know, going back to different areas. So we want to show them, you know, make a, a connection with those students. And I'll be meeting with, with Dr. Oswald later on this week to visit with her about what does that really look like? What can we do? You know, and, and we also, you know, have the, the technology center in there. How can we help, how can we help kids more? You know, how can we, we bridge the gap between us and, you know, help those students? We also want to look at developing and implementing a staffing plan for substitutes and non-instructional staff. And, you know, what does this look like? I'm not quite sure. I've talked to Mr. Argo a little bit about it. In bigger districts, they have, you know, computer programs where they can essentially put it out that they need a sub for a certain day, and people go in and fill in, and that's how they get their subs. In the school, it's, it's interesting because, you know, we want as many people to sign up to be subs as possible, and the good ones get taken up really quickly. And we, you know, we have teachers that will request people to come in and sub, but, you know, the more people that we have, the better it is for everybody. And it's, it's, it's super hard when it's seven o'clock in the morning and you have someone that calls in sick, and you're like, okay. So you start calling people, and they're like, oh, I'm already subbing here. Oh, I'm already subbing here. It would be super nice if we already knew, hey, these people are taken, and we have a, a different way to deal with that. So. Evaluate research-based retention and employee job satisfaction strategies. We want to figure out the best way to keep Alva teachers here. That seems, you know, all businesses are concerned about that. There are some things that, that, you know, the, the district has done, like their connection with Northwestern, you know? Northwestern is allowing our teachers into their games, and we're allowing Northwestern employees into our games. So there's just some different strategies that, that we think that we can look at to help, you know, in retention. And then the final one is scheduling options for PLCs. This is super hard to do in the high school and the middle school, is to provide that time, you know, to those, for those teachers. You know, in the, in a perfect world, we would say, okay, well, all the English teachers are going to have a plan, fifth hour. But with the schedule, the way that it is, there's no way that we can do that. If it happens, it's, it's a fluke, that, you know, two teachers have it at the same time in the same area. It's a little bit easier that in the elementaries, I think that for the most part, they've been able to implement that and have, you know, common PLC time in their buildings. It's just a little bit different for middle school and high school. And we've got to look at how we can fix that because we want, we want to be able to give those teachers the time that they need to plan, to look at MAPS scores, to look at, you know, engagement activities and figure out what they can do to better the classroom. So that's an area that we are going to be focusing on as well. And then we have our resources committee. That's our final one. You know, establish committee for facilities, technology, and transportation. This was the original one. The facilities, you know, last year, they met, they toured, they, they really worked on the facilities. The technology and the transportation hasn't been established as much. There's areas that we have definitely moved forward in, but there's no real committees established and created for that. So, you know, in the facilities, we wanted to look at, you know, daily upkeep and maintenance. And I don't want to go into their areas, but we're doing a great job of, you know, we now have an online system that we can put in tickets, you know, which is what we do for technology also. So we're making improvements, but, you know, when it gets to the resources term, we'll let all of them tell you all the great things that they're doing. Okay? And then we just want to make sure, you know, we're looking at all the facilities for safety and security, looking at the entrances, the fire panels, surveillance, safety girls, all of those things. And then looking at our district technology plan, you know, what, what changes do we need to make? What do we need to look for in the future? You know, what is, you know, how long are our computers going to, going to last our kids? What do we really need to look at and plan for? So. And then have a complete district-wide assessment of technology equipment. How much is, you know, how much are computers being used in the classroom? You know, what does that really look like? What do they, what are classes really need? So those are different areas that resources is going to be looking at. I kind of went ahead and kind of talked about some of those things, but, you know, we may need to survey and figure out how it's being used. Is it used for, you know, are they just logging on and filling out their information on Google Classroom? Are they doing creative activities? Are teachers using that for, for student engagement, like using Jam boards and, and different things like that? And then we want to create an administrative teacher technology survey to see, you know, the kids are be like, oh, I don't know. I don't know what we do. We don't know anything on our computers, which may not always be a hundred percent accurate. But our teachers can come back and say, oh, well, I use it for this, and I use it for this, and the kids don't even know that they're learning. So sometimes that's, that's an issue. Okay? And then we want to come back and, you know, we've been doing this as, as we've gone along, you know, make sure that we are providing the board of education with all of our steps and what we're working on and what areas, you know, we feel are necessary and just keeping you guys involved in all of that. And then, you know, creating a budget that will show, hey, we need to purchase some more computers. We need to, you know, look at these different plans and, and make additions to that. So those are all the areas that, that resources is going to look at. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I do. When we initially kicked off strategic planning, you had a lot of community involved. Are we going to get back to that? Were we, were you have, I know you have had some. I think about their tuition for the gym, and I had some people approach me and said, is that really a high priority? And so I'm wondering if the more community we have involved, then everybody goes, well, we, yeah, if we look at everything else, it is a high priority.
Right.
But I just, and I know that's hard, but I just know, and of course, I'm thinking when initially kicked it off, you had a big room with all these people and the students. I'm just wondering if that.
You know, I think.
Get back to any of that, or do we need to, if you got community involvement, do we need to make sure our community understands that you have been using the committee, like you said with Kelly Parker?
Right.
And using them, and it's not just us making the decision for what we want. We're trying to do what's best for the entire community, with everybody's input and balance. Does that make sense?
And, and to me, to me, I see it as, you know, we all sat here and looked at the areas that we want to improve. Now let's break out and figure, you know.
And I think that's important because you see things that I don't see.
Right.
If I just come bouncing in, I don't see.
Right. You know, in retention, like my goal is, I'd like to send a survey out to the teachers. Like I want to come up with some, some things that we could truly possibly do and then send something out to the teachers, you know? But that's going to mean I need to get input from, from the tech center. What, what can you, you know, what can we work out? You know, what are things we can do? The facilities community, or the facilities, they brought in all kinds of people from the, from the community to go tour the buildings. To give the recommendations.
And I know they did because I was involved in some one of that, but I, I just wonder if the rest of our community needs to know, really, I mean, there's a lot of work that's been done, even.
Right.
Post-COVID, but I just don't think people are aware of it.
Yeah.
I just think it's important that they see how hard you've worked.
Right.
Because it is important, and these are our schools, and these are our kids. And so anytime we get an opportunity to make sure they, I want to make some, however, the best way to communicate, and I don't know that's what community can do.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good point. You know, we want to, we want to give all the success to our students and what they do, but, you know, we're working hard in different areas and trying to involve people. And I think that, you know, figuring out the medium for doing that is, is a great idea.
You know, I think, and I follow this, this, you know, but I, I think the community has a lot of confidence in you. They look to you as the experts in their profession, and they know each one of you personally, and they have a lot of, they're really proud of you. They are. They're not, back here, good one, what's going on? Yeah. So therefore, we're looking to you to say, what can we do about this? Or how can, how can we make this better? Or what can we do with the resources that we're providing as, as taxpayers to make things better? They really have a lot of confidence. And I, I don't think sometimes you hear of that enough.
Good point.
And I'm really excited about you back on it, so many of the things again. That's encouraging. I'd like to never hear the word pandemic, you know? Because I think that now we're just wallowing in that. But thank you for, for bringing these things together, and thank you for getting excited again about what we're doing here. I, we need to, our community work, and you guys all know about the meaning. So thank you for some of this. I, I feel good about hearing that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm going to tell you something. I appreciate you guys, principals, and your leadership with the collaboration that you all have done. That means a lot.
It does.
I know, I appreciate that, you all working together amongst all these different areas, but for the common good, and just that collaboration goes a long way. So I appreciate that a lot.
And I think that's great because we've had, you know, some newer members that weren't, you know, that weren't there in the beginning, and, you know, making sure Dr. Nyswanger is, you know, in the loop of everything, and, you know, Mr. Foster. I think that's a, that's a great thing for us all to get together and discuss those.
Put them to work.
Exactly. No more loafing. So we're new.
Oh, wow.
You have a hunting season for about six months.
Oh, six months? That's a long time. That's awesome. I thought it was going to be like six minutes or something.
I might mention to everybody too, again, I really appreciate the principals' work. You know, when we implemented this, it was to take things off our plate, and it's been hard to manage that. And I think we're getting closer to a place where that's been easier. But I can tell you that I met with the K-20 Center and the School Board Association because schools across Oklahoma are struggling with how to restart their plans. Everybody did this, and now we're. Everybody did this and now we're, like, a lot of schools did these and were all, how do you, how do you get this back going? Have things changed? Do our, have our values changed? Have our beliefs changed? And so in the spring, we anticipate that the K-20 Center and the School Board Association will come back up and we will have another community forum to kind of look at where we're at and look at what needs to be adjusted and have somebody help facilitate those conversations. But in the meantime, we're going to continue to move forward with voting party plans.
Thank you. And you are appreciated. So thank you. All right. Items, I guess you're ready for number six. Item to current business. Six point one, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one, certified position for the 2022-23 school year.
Mrs. Tucker.
I have Debbie Whitted here with me today and we are proposing that to vote for her to be a PE teacher for second grade at Longfellow, fourth and fifth at Lincoln. She was five, spent five years in the district as a para. She is, has a degree in health of physical science. She has been working on her emergency, been working to get her emergency certified and that has been board approved with the state board now. And so we are excited to bring her here for a vote.
Motion to approve this recommendation.
I make the motion that we hire Debbie Whitted with an elementary position for the two grade schools.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Welcome. You're welcome to stay here. You're also welcome to leave. Thank you.
You don't want me in?
Okay.
Thank you.
It's really, we're about finished, obviously. I want to talk. Six point two, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one and applicant number two, non-certified positions for the 22-23 school year.
Okay, so we have two non-certified positions that we are willing to be offering. Haley Fowler is a paraprofessional and will be working out of Washington Early Childhood Center at this point. And then Austin McGee, Austin will be helping our middle school and high school wires with the passing of Mrs. Connor. This was a need for our district. He certainly will not replace her, but he will step in and help us get through the school year. So we recommend appointment of Haley Fowler and Austin McGee.
Make the motion.
I make the motion that we offer Mrs. Fowler and Mr. McGee these positions.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item number six point four, discussion of possible board action. Vote to appoint the superintendent to review results of the national criminal history record searches for fiscal year 23. That's a mouthful.
We need to go back up and do six three real quick, Jane.
Oh, I'm trying to answer.
I like it. I like what you're saying. Just make sure, let me talk about this.
Okay, six point three. Let's go back to some history here. Discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty salary schedule for fiscal year 23.
Okay, so if you will open up that attachment, you will see highlighted, we have some additions to the extra duty salary schedule. I want to draw your attention to the first. We have Julie Bennigan. Prior to this board meeting, she was approved to do three-sevenths title. And so that's a federal program that receives 5% for each one of those hours that she teaches. I said title, ESL. And so that is an extra duty that we then acknowledge on our extra duty payment. If you will scroll on down, you will then see Heather Hall. Really appreciate Ms. Hall. She helped with concessions this year and we needed somebody to step forward and help with that this year and she is doing that for us. You will then see Angela Lake. Angela Lake is a paraprofessional that we hired this year, but also has nursing certifications. And so we will be paying her the nursing stipend, $2,000.
Is that a new position?
No, that's been on our extra duty salary schedule. We've used that previously when we've had some students that may be diabetic. And so that's part of the reason we've left it on there. Angela's going to meet some needs of some students that we have in Washington. And so we appreciate her also. And then finally, Austin McGee, a companyist for ALVA High School and ALVA Middle School.
Is he from Carlin? Is he from you?
He is from Southern Oklahoma.
Okay. We had a very talented McGee family. We're for question for yours.
Yeah, we appreciate Austin. If there are no questions, I would recommend the approval of the revised extra duty salary schedule for FY 23. Move to approve the revised extra duty salary schedule.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll go back to six point four, discussion of possible board action. Vote to appoint the superintendent to review results of the national criminal history record searches for fiscal year 23.
All background checks from the State Department of Education are returned to our office by our EVOs and given to HR. So recommend approval of this routine agenda item for the record searches.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Item number six point five, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the internal activities committee for fiscal year 23. Administrator, Dr. Nieswenger, Dave Foster, Chris Gore, Valerie Rider, Tina Pettis, Randy Nation, and parent Ashley Ferguson.
Appreciate Dr. Nieswenger's work on this committee. This committee, internal activities, reviews any appeals that may be necessary with regard to student activity and absences. This committee reviews board policy, FMA, internal activities. So I would recommend approval of this agenda item for FY 23.
Make the motion.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number six point six, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the gifted and talented committee for fiscal year 23. Parents of gifted and talented students, Courtney Missarola and Amber Bausch. What did I say that wrong? Is that right?
Bausch.
Bausch. I'm going to say that wrong. Teacher of the elementary students, Rachel Cunningham. Teacher of middle school students, Casey Adair. Teacher of high school students, Care Broad. Counselors, Valerie Rider, Jason Keaton, and Tina Pettis. Administrator, Stephanie Martini.
Really appreciate the work that Ms. Martini does for this gifted and talented committee. Begin the year out in a couple of weeks and then you have to form this committee and then begin reviewing board policy, EHBB, which is our gifted and talented policy. This committee will meet together, review, and potentially revise that policy and then they'll bring that back to the board for approval in the October board. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of the gifted and talented committee for FY 23. Move to approve the gifted and talented committee?
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number six point seven, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve a statutory waiver allowing the ALVA district to service fewer than 10 alternative education students without participating in a cooperative agreement with other districts for the 22-23 school year.
So we will continue to serve our alternative education students. Although we have under 10 students that we will serve, we continue to serve those students and we are not in any cooperative agreement with any other schools. And so the State Department of Education requires this statutory, statutory waiver to be approved and signed by the board. So I would recommend approval of this agenda item six point seven.
I make the motion that we approve six point seven.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item number six point eight, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve board policy, CFB-R4 and FE.
If you'll open up the top attachment, CFB-R4. We mentioned this very beginning of school in discussion of smart snacks and vending machines. Really appreciate the work that Mrs. Murphy has done researching this. The State Department in earlier child attrition meeting this summer emphasized the importance of only selling smart snacks and smart drinks, which mean a certain calorie intake in your vending machines. And so to make sure that we comply with that, we passed this policy. This policy will allow, allow our district to apply for exemptions, which will allow students to go to a concession stand during the school day and eat something out of the concession stand or purchase something out of the vending machine. Agenda item, or the second attachment, if you'll open that up, explain our student transfer policy. The student transfer policy is required to be brought to the board four times a year. We are bringing this to you in September so that it is completed and approved by the beginning of October. We have not adjusted our capacities as originally set to start the school year and that is a, something that is suggested that you don't do. So we are not doing that. We've kept our capacities the same. But I do want to draw your attention to where you're able to find our student transfer information on our website. If you go to enrollment and you click on transfer and you go to APS capacity, this gives you an idea of what our enrollment is. Usually update this every couple of weeks. And you can see at kindergarten, we are 16 over capacity. In first grade, we have five availability. We don't have any. If you look at our high school, just draw your attention to these four grades, you can see that we have, we don't have any capacity or would not accept any transfers to our high school because it would be over what we originally set our capacity to be. Again, this is a state law. This is something that's required to be done by all districts to do that. This continues to be kind of a challenge because of staffing issues it presents when you don't really know how many students you're going to have and because there's a shortage of staff. So as we get through the school year, we'll take, take a look at this again next May, June and see what we'd like our capacities to be at for the next school year. Any questions? I will tell you that we are up about 21 students. Our enrollment right now is 1,051. We're normally about 1,031 each year, past couple of years. In 2009, our enrollment was 912.
Are all of those in first grade or what?
I've heard they're all in kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
A couple of times.
What do you think?
He's heard right. They are.
Well, that's the sweetest thing ever.
Listen. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of agenda item six point four.
Make the motion that we approve six point eight. Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Any other items of new business?
No.
All right. Item of documents approved by earlier actions. Do I have a motion, coach, to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.